Do we have the slide first?
Mayor Protem is in the attendee list.
Oh, great.
Go ahead. I'll thank you for letting me know. I will. Oh, looks like they were already promoted. Thank you.
So we do have Mayor Protem Park with us now.
Yes, I'm here.
All right.
Wonderful. Ms. Rayner, please remember you haven't assigned us as interpreters in the meeting.
We wanted to wait till after the mayor's introduction and then provide this slide. And if the interpretation team can share this information orally when this comes up.
Okay.
And then, and then we'll split into that to interpretation rooms.
Okay.
To that end, are we ready to commence? Diane, from your perspective, we're ready to go.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if we can let you convene our proceedings, we'll get rolling.
All right, so we are now going to begin the Buena Park special meeting with the Buena Park City Council and the Buena Park Planning Commission in this joint special virtual meeting beginning at now 6:02. Madam City Clerk, can you please read the special notice regarding COVID-19?
Special Notice Regarding COVID-19. On March 4th, 2020, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state of emergency in California as a result of COVID-19. The governor issued Executive Order N-25-20, which allows council members, commission members, to attend meetings virtually. Please be advised that the City of Buena Park Council members, planning commissioners, staff members, and consultants will be attending this meeting virtually. To allow for adequate time to provide your comments to be reviewed by council members and planning commissioners, please submit comments via email to the City Clerk's office at comments@buena park dot com no later than 5:00 PM today. The City Clerk will distribute all comments to the City Council and Planning Commission. This meeting will allow public viewing via Zoom at rrmdesign.zoom.us. There's a webinar ID and a phone and telephone access as well. If you are experiencing any technical difficulties participating in this meeting, please contact RRM Design at meetingsupport@rrmdesign.com.
Madam City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Sani.
Here.
Councilmember Swift. Mayor Protem Park.
Here.
Mayor Trout.
Here.
Commissioner Kanji.
Here.
Commissioner Deep.
Here.
Commissioner Eads.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Shyby.
Here.
Vice Chair Desai.
Here.
Chair Scholz.
Here.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to hear from our interpreters. Tonight's meeting is available in three languages, English, Korean, and Spanish. As you see, we have the instructions on how to access those languages put on the screen. And now we're going to be having each of the interpreters address those watching about being put into different rooms because we're going to be transferring people in the different rooms based on languages they speak.
I'll start in Spanish. Muy buenas tardes, damas and caballeros. Esta junta va a ser presentada en tres idiomas, inglés, español, y coreano. Pueden ver ustedes en pantalla las instrucciones en cómo ingresar a estos idiomas. Hay un globo en la parte inferior de su pantalla que dice interpretación. Pulsen en ese pequeño globo y van a haber dos opciones, español y coreano. En el caso de español, elijan coreano. En caso de las personas en coreano, van a elegir coreano. Muchas gracias.
Go ahead, Korean.
Hello, I'm Attorney General Ba Geister. If you want to participate in a meeting today, click the icon of the image on the bottom of the screen. You must choose one language, Korean. If you don't want to listen to English, you can choose to mute original audio. If you have an iPad or smartphone, you can use the icon. There will be three icons on the bottom. Click on it to get it. Language interpretation will appear. Click on it. Also, click on Korean. Finally, click Done. Thank you.
And so now what I'll do is I'll wait for RRM to let me know when the different rooms, when people have been transferred to the different rooms, and we're ready to proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. I've initiated the interpretation rooms.
Perfect. So the first items on the agenda is introductions. Since this is the first time many of us have been together in a public meeting, there is a request from staff to ask the planning commissioners as well as council members a special question to help us get acquainted with each other. This does not have to be related to the housing element and council members. We are not looking for your election platform. This is what the staff, staff wrote in here. It's pretty good. The, the question is an answer briefly within 30 seconds. 30 seconds, we're going to keep you guys to that or less. What are you most passionate about that, that made you seek your role to serve the community? So what are you most passionate about that made you seek your role to serve the community? So we're going to begin with planning commissioners followed by council members. First, the order will go Kanji, Deep, Eads, Lee, Sheeb, Desai, and Scholz. So we'll start with Commissioner Kanji.
Yeah, to put me on the spot there, man.
You bet I did.
You know, guys, I've, I've lived in the community for 43 years, my whole life. Yeah, I've seen some good changes, some things I didn't agree with. So just kind of the future of the development of our, you know, of our city again. Just kind of any kind of influence, you know, and major, you know, and being the voice for the community of, you know, the concerns, mostly, you know, privacy. But, you know, being a resident, you know, my, my sons went here to all the schools and Centralia School District. Just want to make sure that, you know, we're all kind of on the same page. And, you know, want to definitely put my opinions to, you know, infrastructure being built here and that the community isn't also getting cheated also, that it's, you know, the right thing for the community. I guess that's kind of the best way I can explain that, but that's about it, Connor.
Next is Commissioner Deep.
Hi, I'm Deborah Depf. I would say learning. I'm now a resident of Orange County, and I work in Orange County as well. I'm someone who grew up in an unincorporated community. I thought this was something that I could really learn about, learn about my community, learn about Buena Park, how government works, and how that would help me learn how to be a better neighbor, a better employee, a better colleague.
I'll go as Attorney General.
Next is Commissioner Eads.
Next is Commissioner Eads. Your next speaker is Korean American.
If we could place her back into the room for interpretation for Korean Americans.
Thank you.
Mr. Ms. Rayners, you haven't assigned any of Korean interpreter as an interpreter when you opened Korean channel. So I can't not interpret. I'm sorry, but.
Can I talk now?
Please.
Hi, I'm Mark Eads. I'm a former Disney.
I'm going to interrupt then. Could we have a response from RRM? So do we have, do we have no members of the public at this time seeking Korean translation? And if not, do we still want a translation to, to go forward? Because this may be being recorded so that way people from the Korean American community could go on and, and view this after the meeting?
I, we're working to resolve it on our end. We'll fix the delegation on our end. If you can just give us a minute, apologize for the technical difficulty.
Okay, we'll proceed once, once you give us the, the green light too. So Mark, we're gonna have to hold tight for just a second.
I think that should have worked.
Yeah, it looks like it did.
Okay, got a thumbs up. Apologize again. You may proceed.
Commissioner Eads, you're good to go.
Hi, I'm a former Disney Imagineer, worked for Imagineering for 13 years and worked for Disney for 21. I'm also a former reporter for both the Orange County News Channel and the Orange County Register. I joined because one of the things I used to rail about when I was a reporter was everybody tries to make everything a national issue and nobody pays attention to the local scene. So when I saw there was an opening, I applied. And basically, I want to make sure everybody pays attention to the community that I've lived in for 39 years. That's it.
Commissioner Lee.
Don't hear anybody.
Commissioner Sheeb.
Yes, hi, Commissioner Shyby here. I just wanted to let you guys know I joined because my involvement with my local union, I was told about the opening. And once I was told, I, I decided to give it a shot. I've never backed down from a challenge. And I was in the Marine Corps for nine years. I'm in the pipe fitting local union out of Orange County here. And then I decided to put my name in the hat for a planning commissioner for Buena Park, the city I grew up in. I went to school here. And I decided it would be a good idea to try out and become an active member in the community and see what difference I can make. And that's about it. Thank you.
Commissioner Desai.
Good evening. I'm a resident of City of Buena Park, and I have been a part of Buena Park since my arrival from England in 1987. So I personally felt that I have had a lot of support, direct and indirect, from city and the residents. And I personally felt that I owe my gratitude to city by joining the commission and serve the commission and be part of the community.
Next, we'll go on to Chair Scholz.
Hi. I moved into Buena Park 63 years ago and lived here almost. But I have moved out a couple of times. I not only grew up in Buena Park, but I might join the Buena Park Police Department in 1969 and worked there for 30 years. At the end of my career, the last few years, I was lucky to have been involved with establishing the Neighborhood Improvement Program. And I became very aware of how important revitalizing housing stock and different types of decision made by the planning commission, how that affect the community. So once I retired from the police department, I applied to become part of the planning commission, and I've served on it ever since.
Councilmember Brown, followed by Councilmember Sani, Councilmember Swift, and then Mayor Protem Park. Councilmember Brown.
Okay, I've lived here in Buena Park 47 years. I've been on the city council 28 years. I also represent the city. It's SCAGged the last 26 years. Been on the Orange County Transportation Authority, the MetroLink, and the latest San Diego Railroad Agency. My main interest has always been in transportation and good transportation for the city. But I'm extremely interested in the future of housing in Buena Park because of the rating numbers we have and trying to zone for those to allow the houses to be built if a developer comes in. So I'm very interested in this presentation and the whole house element as it proceeds.
Councilmember Sani.
Um, yeah, you know, I, I wanted to be on council because I want to help my community. I've seen a lot of significant challenges coming up for the community, but different ones since the pandemic hit. That changed the view of a, of a lot of things. So many people have experienced losses because of the pandemic. And so, you know, I, I heard a lot about the challenges people are experiencing, and I'm interested in helping to find solutions for those. And I have an open door policy. I welcome feedback from everybody. I think we're going to have to work together. And I'm excited that we have this group tonight talking about this and learning about it because I think we need all points of view to do a really good job with the housing element in Buena Park. Thanks.
Councilmember Swift, is she on now? Has anyone, has anyone been able to get ahold of Councilmember Swift to make sure that she's able to join us? Or if they've heard back from her that she's not able to?
She's here, but her microphone is muted.
Oh, okay, so she is on. Councilmember Swift, can you hear us? All right, next I'll go on to Mayor Protem Park.
Hi, this is Sunny Park, Mayor Protem. I have lived in Buena Park since 2017. I served as a liaison city council member for the planning commission last year. And I'm, I am a city representative on SCAG on the community and housing development issue. And thank you for putting this very important agenda item for the city. And I look forward to sharing all great ideas tonight. Thank you.
Perfect. And then for myself, I guess what, what I was most passionate about that made me seek this role is really that in our local level, I mean, we can make tangible improvements right here in our own backyard. They're lasting, they're long term. And a mix of that and also wanting to bring generational equity to decision-making tables in our city, I think, is something that added value and was, was different. And I definitely get excited for this work every single day and to hear from the community and actually see the changes that we get to make together as a team, as a council. So I think the rest of you for, for your service, especially those on our planning commission and the, the fun challenges we're going to be having as we move forward through this. And let's get on with, with a pretty productive informational meeting. So next I'm going to ask that our staff introduce the project and introduce the project and the presenters. So I'll first ask Swati Meshram, our planning manager, to take that away.
Mayor.
Mayor, I just noticed Councilmember Beth Swift is able to speak now. Her mic is unmuted, so if she wants to.
Yes, thank you so much. I, I don't know why I was having so much trouble getting to the place where it was turned off, but that was, that was my issue. So thank you so much. I assume the, the question was why we are on city council or why we want to have a voice in planning our, our city. And for me, I love our city. It's not perfect for sure, and it's not as beautiful as I would like it to be. But it's, it's been my home my whole life. It was my father's and his family's home from 1937 on. And when they came as former sharecroppers in Oklahoma to California, they thought this was paradise. Well, I know it's not paradise, but I would like it to have that paradise kind of look with lots of trees and, and beautiful homes and, and, well, landscape parks. And so I would like it to be just a wonderful place for kids to grow up, go to school, and families enjoying their neighborhoods. And I think we're, we've made progress in that respect my 10 years so far on the city council. So the last year and a half of my council tenure, I would love to see that to continue and for many years in the future for what we plan today. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
All right, back to you, Swati.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Commission. So tonight's joint session item is about the housing element. Our aim here is to kickstart the housing element update process. Tonight we'll present some informational substance content, basically in the PowerPoint, which is going to be what is housing element, why is it required? What is the process? What does it consist of? We are not really expecting to get any kind of a direction or decisions from either of the two bodies tonight. Our aim is more to generate discussion and get any kind of preliminary comments from, from both of, both the bodies. As far as the community is concerned, you'll notice that we have several attendees from the community. They're, they will not be able to either share their comments or, you know, chat through the chat window. We had requested them to send their comments in writing beforehand, and we've made those available to both the council as well as the commission. And just to keep in mind, this is the first meeting, definitely not the last. We are going to have other community involvement formats. We will have a community meeting coming up. We will also have an online survey that people can share their comments through. So that said, I'm going to turn it over to our city consultants, Diane Basket from RRM Design and Veronica Tam from Veronica Tam and Associates. They're both great ladies, very experienced, and you're definitely in good hands. But I must caution you, it, it may feel like a lot of information. And please hang in there, you know, some of it you might already be familiar with and some of it might be new. So if you have any questions, we would prefer that you, you know, waited till the end of the presentation. But definitely if something was just a burning question that, that needed to be addressed, then we can definitely accommodate that. So with that, take it away, Diane.
Thank you, Swati. Mayor Trout and Chair Scholz and Commissioners and Councilmembers, it's really an honor to be here tonight. We just kicked things off with staff a little bit and are really looking forward to sharing some of the background information on the housing element update. It can get a little technical, but I think a lot of the folks that I've heard from tonight probably helped, helped with the decision-making on, at least we're very involved in the process of shaping what this housing element will cover. So I think that's, that's pretty awesome. I do want to mention a few other folks with RRM Design Group that are here. Rachel Rayner, Associate Planner, who is helping with the technical part of our Zoom meeting tonight. I really appreciate all of her help. And also Brady Woods, a planner formerly was with the City of Buena Park. And then also Brett Stinson, Senior Planner. So they will be listening in as we move through the, the PowerPoint, but really mostly to hear your comments tonight. We have structured the presentation. We already had introductions. But what is the housing element, what are the requirements and the process? A little bit, just touching on the last cycle's accomplishments. I think that's always good to reflect on, some statistics on Buena Park. And then also the regional housing needs assessment, RENA, which you'll hear a fair amount about tonight. And then we'll be talking about the, the site's inventory assessment, what criteria is applied, and then also a couple of examples, just preliminary to get the juices flowing. So we'll go ahead and get started. As many folks may know, the housing element is a required element of the city's general plan. It's an assessment of housing needs and how best to accommodate existing and future housing needs. It's required of all cities and counties in the state of California. It's required to be updated every eight years. There's a lot more prescriptive, state requirements are a lot more prescriptive for this particular element. And the deadline for the current housing element update is October 15th of this year. And there's also 120-day grace period after that. Importantly, it's reviewed for compliance by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And you'll hear us talk about HCD throughout the presentation. So a little bit of navigation on acronyms, and that's an important one. Now, the benefits of HCD, of state compliance, is that there's a presumption of legal, of it being a legally adequate housing element in courts. It also maintains eligibility for state housing funds. And you don't face any RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment carried over into the next housing element, which makes it even more onerous. Veronica, I don't know if you have any other comments on this particular slide?
No, we're fine. I think we can answer more specific questions if any of you would have. Certainly, in Orange County, some of you have heard about the Huntington Beach situation, that they, they were one of the jurisdictions that were sued by the state for in compliance of housing elements.
Thank you, Veronica. Consequences of non-compliance, our risk of litigation, as Veronica just noted. And they're also are ramping up, the Attorney General is ramping up some of the compliance for, for housing elements. And eligibility of state grants, this, this update actually is funded through state grants, so it's handy to be eligible for funding. And also that if the courts invalidate an element, it suspends the city's authority to issue building permits until the housing element is brought into compliance. So it's kind of a big stick from a non-compliance perspective. Now, the housing element update process is going to move quickly over the next few months. It starts with a housing needs assessment because the, the housing element was really meant to be tailored for the unique needs of the Buena Park community. Draft housing element update is provided, is prepared, which includes policies and programs. And then also it needs to be reviewed by the state prior to adoption by review and adoption by the, the planning commission city council this fall. And then once that's adopted, it gets sent back to HCD for final, for final review. And importantly, on this slide, it's good to point out that once the housing element is certified, adopted, then there, it's implemented over the next eight years is the timeline. And then there's a three-year window, however, to accommodate any zoning changes, code amendments that might be a program in the housing element update. And throughout the process, outreach is a component, and I'll touch on this on the next slide, where we have targeted efforts to inform the housing element update, including stakeholder interviews with different special needs, maybe seniors, the family, folks that provide services, homeless, homelessness, and larger families are important to consider. We often like to talk with wheeltors or other folks in the community that can have some insights on what are the housing needs. And we have a joint study session tonight with the planning commission city council. We will also be publishing an online housing need survey that will be made available to the public. The timing on that is within the next week or so, week or two, we'll be making that public. So I suggest for any folks that are watching the study session tonight, please look for the, the posting of that survey on the city's webpage that addresses the housing element. We'll also be conducting a community workshop. Most likely, it'll be in a virtual format. And then also, of course, we'll have public review and adoption hearings as we move, move through the process. Now, the state law is very specific about what the housing element update needs to address. Importantly, it needs to accommodate the projected housing demand as characterized as distributed throughout the different agencies in California and through by SCAG methodology for, for Buena Park. It includes policies and programs to preserve existing affordable housing. It also looks to improve the safety quality of existing housing conditions. It's really intended to facilitate housing development for all income levels and household types, including special needs populations, and really to promote fair, fair housing for all. The, the document itself, it provides an introduction with a summary of the outreach process. It provides a needs assessment again that will inform the, the policies and programs that are recommended in the housing element update. And includes a constraints analysis of what, what are some of the impediments to providing the housing that is needed for Buena Park? Resources and opportunities, a review of past accomplishments. Resources and opportunities, a review of past accomplishments for the past eight-year cycle. And then also a housing action plan, which will delineate specific items to accomplish over the next eight years. Who is responsible to give a roadmap for implementation? So some of the first cycle accomplishments, we'll just go through this list pretty quickly. But some of the city housing programs have been successful, homeownership assistance, Fair Housing Council Foundation, Neighborhood Improvement Program, among others. So it's impressive of what's been accomplished over the last cycle regarding programs, then also regarding actual housing developments that have been implemented over this last cycle. This is just a highlight of some of the projects that have been implemented over time. Some are 100% affordable, some are market rate. Some were seen restricted. So it does represent a range of addressing different housing needs. So Buena Park today, there's a little bit of a correction on this from the previous version of the slide that might have seen. But it's not surprising that Buena Park is largely, for housing purposes, largely comprised of single-family detached residences. And then behind that are multifamily residences that are five or more units. With that being rounded out by multifamily, smaller number of units, mobile homes and single-family attached. So overall, the distribution of housing is very similar actually to that in the region in the SCAG Southern California Association of Governments region. It parallels it pretty well from the regional statistics too. So this is, I think, an interesting slide that really gets to the heart of affordability and income. Where this breaks out the income distribution of Buena Park today. With a total of a little over 23,000 households. About 18% fall into the extremely low income category, 16%.
Miguel, you accidentally got unmuted. Sorry. All good.
Thank you. Low is 19%, moderate is 13%, and then above moderate is 34%. And that's based on the area median income. And that it's considered affordable if occupants pay no more than 30% of their income on housing costs. So a little bit more of what are some of the trends? The total population has grown 8% over this last eight-year period. This is actually from 2000 to 2018, but it's grown 8%. The largest age group that has been growing is the 55 to 64 years in age group. Household size has been increasing moderately, about 3%. And then renters have been increasing slightly and homeownership has been decreasing slightly. So you can see renters have gone up to 0.2% and homeownership has gone down to 0.2%. So it's an interesting dynamic that we're seeing. On this slide, we wanted to just show the numbers for the regional housing needs assessment for Buena Park as it compares to the whole region of the Southern California Association of Governments. It's about 1.3 million new housing units that are projected. For Orange County, it's about 183,000, a little under 184,000. And then that gets divvied up to different agencies. And Buena Park's Rena projection is 8,919, so a little under 9,000 units. And you can compare it to other nearby agencies. Anaheim, it's over 17,000 residential units. That is projected, it's the capacity that they will be planning for. Garden Grove is 19,000. Cypress is smaller proportionately, a little under 4,000. Fullerton is 13,000 and Santa Ana is 3,000. Although that number, I think there's missing a number on that one, so sorry, I apologize for that.
No, Santa Ana is 3,000.
Oh, is it 3,000? Okay, thank you for.
It is.
You made me question myself, but that was correct.
That number caused a lot of heartburns in Orange County communities, so.
So this slide helps compare the fifth cycle with the sixth cycle numbers particularly for Buena Park. What I think is interesting is that while the number has greatly increased from the total units, 339 units in the last cycle. Is the number of residential units that the city was targeted to plan for. And this time it's a little under 9,000, but the proportions, the percentages of very low income, low income, moderate income and above moderate income are roughly the same. So the percentages are very similar, but the number is definitely much higher. On this slide, it seems like a lot of numbers, but I think it's interesting to share what is considered affordable. And it puts it in perspective when like, for instance, a low income for a three-person household is $92,250. So it's kind of a good benchmark to understand what is considered low income, median income and moderate income. It's definitely gone up over time, but I think this is an interesting slide to share. So where are we? Where are we at in the process?
Leanne, you got unmuted.
I'm so sorry. It is my turn to come in. Can you sign me?
Representative.
Give me one moment.
Yeah, from our, I'll take care of that. Thanks.
Okay, we should be good now.
All right, thank you Rachel. So where are we at in the process? We, our team has just come, had our contract inked, we're ready to go. And we kicked off things in a very robust fashion. We have stakeholder interviews and meetings coming up next week. And we have our study session tonight. We have initiated work on the housing needs assessment, which will be the foundation for the update. And then also the housing need survey has been drafted and is in the hands of staff to review. And we hope to make that publicly available soon. And we will be planning for a community workshop coming up. That date is yet to be determined. So we're in the beginning stages. But moving quickly. A key part of this process is looking at where the 80, 900 units can be accommodated to plan for that. Some of the things that are considered in our analysis are looking at what what are the existing uses? Are there high turnover rates? Is it an outdated model of business? Is it underutilized essentially? The age and condition of a structure, if there is a structure on site? The existing use of the land, is it at its highest and best value or is it underutilized? Also, we look at any expressed interest of property owners or developers for redevelopment. Is there some interest in investment and repositioning the property? Also, we look at areas exhibiting active development activities where we need to show the we need to show the pattern of development that we're assuming. And we want to look at areas where there is active interest. Other considerations, some strategies. This covers a variety of methods. So we can start looking at the existing fourth and fifth cycle sites. Properties that were looked at in the previous housing element cycles to see if some of them still provide some capacity for development over these next few years. And we can check off the ones that have already developed. We look at vacant and underutilized parcels. Those are harder to come by sometimes. Other suggested sites are Buena Park Mall that could be repositioned. And the housing opportunities overlay. One strategy is accessory dwelling units. It's not a particularly extensive number for Buena Park. But some communities, it can be a pretty significant contribution to satisfying the Rena allocation numbers. Even though there's only been five permits, I think, over the last three years. We may be able to bump that up a lot if there is interest in the community and interest from decision makers to provide some programs to amplify those efforts. Interestingly too, places of worship and congregational sites. With new state legislation, it provides more incentive for places of worship that might have additional area on their site that could accommodate some housing. For some, it aligns with their mission of providing housing for maybe special needs groups or affordable housing or seniors. So that's an option. We already have two examples of Buena Park, which we can touch on in a minute. Also, public lands at the state or local level. And also we look to rezone, or there's some rezoning opportunities to provide for more capacity than what current zoning or general plan designations can allow. So we'll talk a little bit about some preliminary thoughts. Just as a refresher, the land use categories for Buena Park, they vary from 7.2 dwelling units per acre up to 80D's per acre in the entertainment and excuse portion of town. And the default density that the state considers to be considered a lower affordability is 30D's per acre. A relatively new, some new legislation requires that, it's a little different than the last cycle, is it requires sufficient and available sites throughout the Rena planning period. So that means if one site needs to drop off the list of potential sites, then the city is obligated to provide, to compensate for that loss in capacity. So it's good to have a buffer in the housing element inventory of it's suggested 15 to 30%, but that may be somewhat depends on the jurisdiction and the numbers. So it's important to consider as we are looking at the sites inventory to find some buffer because this is a new requirement that if some sites drop off, then we will need to compensate for that during the planning period. As mentioned, congregational sites are a new opportunity where there are some concessions such as it relates to parking on site. Some jurisdictions have adopted a congregational or developing a congregational site overlay such as the city of Pasadena to really help facilitate housing opportunities on congregational sites. And this is one example that I mentioned earlier that's already in Buena Park is the St. Joseph's Episcopal Church. Where there were 65, excuse me, 66 senior housing units that were developed as part of that site, fairly recent project. Many of you may already be familiar with that. We've split the city into north and south just for purposes of display on the slide. And we've had some initial conversations with city staff to develop just some initial thoughts on where we should start our analysis for where additional housing capacity could be provided. This map shows some area along Beach Boulevard, the northern portion of Beach Boulevard. Orange Thorpe Avenue also, this is a pretty pretty broad segment of Orange Thorpe Avenue that could be considered to be repositioned looking at maybe some other potential zoning classifications. And then also Whittaker Street is another area of potential analysis for additional units. This map doesn't show, there's several like smaller infill sites throughout the city, but these are just kind of the broad brush areas that we've had some initial discussions with staff just to get the juices flowing and we welcome further comments tonight. Similarly, for the southern portion of the city, Buena Park Mall is a potential site. Crescent Avenue, Knott Avenue, Lincoln Avenue and also Ball Road are some potential areas of analysis preliminarily. And I believe Swati or Dave had a few comments they wanted to make on this slide as well.
Sure, thanks Diane. And I'll start and Swati has some comments as well, I think. But we wanted to take just a moment to mention briefly, I mean, you may notice, we have not yet circled your Beach Boulevard Entertainment Corridor area, and that's worth a mention. This, as the council and commission know, this is a special area. It's got a special vision. And it has additional layers, shall we say, of considerations that really will need to be in play. And having housing considerations there would really need careful consideration to align with the other goals for that specific planned area. Our early thought suggests that this corridor merits its own special study considerations. And certainly the council knows, I mean, they recently discussed revisiting the vision, if you will, for the Boulevard. A special focus like that is really beyond the scope of the housing element update that we're embarking on. But it is a natural follow-up piece and action for zoning and something that the city could consider starting as the element update progresses. So we anticipate that staff will have, you know, some additional information for you on an approach in the coming months. But we wanted to share these early insights with you now, in case you're wondering, why isn't it circled on this map quite yet? That's some of that background. I'll let Swati comment further.
Yeah, thanks David and Diane. The only other thing that I wanted to add for council and commission benefit is that, you know, what David just mentioned doesn't mean that there aren't any other hotel sites within the city of Buena Park that might be good candidates to consider as opportunity sites for housing. There certainly are a lot of hotels outside of the Beach Boulevard corridor. You might remember from last year, we actually discussed the Airport Inn project, which converted into permanent supportive housing. And certainly in the last couple of months, we've been approached by we've been approached regarding a couple of other hotels outside of that corridor, which we will be communicating with RRM with and studying as part of this effort. Back to you Diane, thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. So we thought we would, we didn't want to do a deep dive into the discussion of sites tonight, but we wanted to provide just a couple of like sample sites that are just to illustrate what types of properties we might be looking into and the type of analysis that would go along with that. We have a few samples here. So this one is it Knott Avenue, 8750 Knott Avenue. And it's a little over half an acre. It's currently vacant. And there have been some past inquiries and interest from the development community. And part of the analysis would be to verify site constraints. So it could be a good candidate potentially for a general plan amendment rezone from community shopping. CS to residential mixed use, making sure it's compatible with the surrounding context and neighborhood. So that's an example of a vacant site we considered. Another opportunity example is Lincoln Avenue. It's adjacent to Knott and Lincoln Services, restaurants and schools. It's a little under three acres and the benefit of this site is that part of it is owned by the city, is publicly owned. It's a little under three acres and the benefit of this site is that it part of it is owned by the city is publicly owned. And there also has been interest from the development community. So that's something to to look at more closely. And again, potentially repositioning this this site from community shopping to residential mixed use classification. And making sure also that any redesignations would be compatible with a particular context for that site. The last example that we're providing is the former OSH site Orchard Supply Hardware. It's a little bit of a larger site, almost four acres. It's adjacent to La Palma and Dale Street. And there's certain services nearby, retail and restaurants. And again, there's been some interest from the development community, which is a sign that it could be feasible for repositioning. And again, it can be reclassified potentially from community shopping to residential mixed use. So these are just a few. Is this a sampling of potential sites? That we can look into, we're just initiating our analysis. So there's definitely nothing has been determined at this point, or or we're not making a recommendation. We just wanted to illustrate the types of sites that we'll be looking at. One of the last slides here is really the planning commission is a summary of the planning commissions and city councils role in this process. And just a few bullets, but it's like any other element of the general plan. Uh, the planning commission and city council will review and approve. Be the the reviewing and approving bodies for the housing element update. We anticipate like tonight, we have the joint study session. And then periodic updates from staff on project status and strategies as different recommendations. You know, might be in the formulation process. Also, we'll be having a a public workshop and we encourage your attendance and observing the public workshop. And then, of course, the planning commission will be reviewing the draft housing element update. And of course, the city council will be the final body for review and adoption. And lastly, as mentioned earlier in the presentation, those three years after adoption, there'll be review of any rezoning or code amendments that would be implementation programs of the housing element update and both all of you would be definitely involved in that process as well over these next next few years. So I think I'm going to turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, for helping guide the discussion.
So tonight we have three questions that you see on your screen that we would like to hear discussion and thoughts of of members on the commission and the council. And also any questions you might have for those that had presented here tonight, this would be the the perfect opportunity to do it in this joint setting. So what I'm going to do is first ask if from any of the seven commissioners, if there's any of you that have either questions or thoughts on this item. If since I know not everybody is able to do the raise hand button because some people have have called in. If you could just say your name, your first name or your last name, say your last name. And then I will call on you to speak. And again, it's for these discussion questions, any or all of those. As well as the, as well as any other questions or comments you might have related to these items. So we'll start with the commissioners. Any commissioners wishing to speak at this time?
Mark Eads.
All right, we'll begin with Commissioner Eads.
Yes, one of the things that I don't see, and I know there's all kinds of rules on the books. But with this incredible number that we're supposed to address, how is it going to impact both transportation and parking? Which is usually a problem when you do the bigger properties. So that's just one thing that I think we need to ask about, how would that be done? How can we accommodate the tremendous number of cars? That as much as we might want more mass transit, the fact is for Southern California, it's going to be cars during this eight year cycle. And there's some pretty bad traffic on Beach Boulevard and La Palma already in Lincoln. So just something to think about. So that's it for me.
All right. Next, any other commissioners wishing to speak?
Uh, Depp, please.
Commissioner Depp.
Thank you. A couple of clarifications. One is, I believe there was a change in the statute that if sites were identified in the previous two cycles that we can't reuse them if we don't have some specific information, a a letter of interest from the owner, developers, or some other documentation, is that still, does that still stand?
That's true. Actually, it doesn't ask for that detailed of of requirements because that's almost impossible, particularly when you're dealing with all these, the magnitude that you're dealing with. But if you're reusing sites, you need to provide more discussions about how the sites are more feasible today than they were like maybe five, ten, eight, you know, twenty years ago. Essentially, the state doesn't want you to keep putting in a site that has no possibility of being developed and continue just to use an invisible site. We have already done completed two housing elements in the San Diego region, which is ahead of the SCAG region certainly have reused a lot of sites. But it's not, it hasn't, HCD has not requested that any of that type of detailed requirements and certainly do not need consent of the property owner to to have a letter that in order to put it on the site's inventory.
Okay, thank you. And then going back to slide seven, which is the timeline. I know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done and the bulk of it by staff. Identifying sites and going back and forth and talking with HCD. Can you flesh out just a little bit more on the timeline of, I know housing elements are due in October, but the timeline of when drafts might be coming before either the planning commission and the city council? And then having HCD review it and giving us feedback and then having staff perhaps have to go through modifications. So even though it's due in October, are we really, is the bulk of the work that staff's going to be doing, does it have to be finished by June or July or August? What's, what's the timeline?
You're, that is correct. It's a pretty short timeline to draft the element and also to allow time for planning commission review. And then also sending it to HCD for for review for sixty, they have sixty days to to review it and provide comments back. So there might be some revisions that are needed before it's served up for adoption. So it would be really this like June, June, July. The draft would need to be drafted.
Wow. Good luck. I'm sorry laughing, but yeah, it it's a lot of work. So anyway, it can help. Let us know.
Great. Thank you. There. And there's also the grace period, which is handy, but we're still trying to target for October.
Yeah, this is Johnny Kaji, Planning Commission.
Commissioner.
Yeah, that one thing I didn't hear, and I know it's a big concern with the community, if there's any kind of security measures in place, you know, obviously as population goes, you know. It's always been a trend on studies, you know, population goes up, crime goes up. Just wondering if there's any security plan that's going to take place. Because again, I I'm pretty sure, you know, and and I hear it already. Community is a little bit concerned about that. That's all I got.
No, and I and I would just comment at this point, Mr. Mayor, if I might. Appreciating Commissioner Eads and and Commissioner Kanji's comments. Part of what we'll also be taking on with this review is the the effort has to be cleared through SEQA, through the California Environmental Quality Act. And while the housing element update is a little more global in nature, but certainly when we get down to implementation measures that the element will almost certainly identify for rezoning, you know, for looking at any specific plans and so forth, those things will have to be reviewed in in pretty significant detail under SEQA. And issues like transportation will need to be, you know, considered as will, you know, public services like police and and public safety services. So to answer your questions a bit, that that will all have to be in the mix. So we've we've got that in mind. Thank you.
All right. And I see Vice Chair Desai, I see that your hand is is raised on the app. Do you wish to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. My, my question is, this is not only City Buena Park requirement. I'm sure it is related to the neighboring cities as well. Because we don't know exactly when their planning cycle comes to and or or how that comes in. So is there a joint effort between the neighboring cities to make sure that we stay in sync with other neighbors and making sure that we don't push our quote unquote housing need pressures into the area where the other communities or other communities are putting their planning and desired locations close to ours and and is is trying to find out whether we have a joint effort.
Any, David, would you want to take that?
Well, and I'll I'll look for some RRM help, but the the short answer I'd suggest is yes, regional considerations are absolutely given. And this is kind of that inverted pyramid, if you will, of of, you know, of the process where the SCAG region, I mean, first, it's the you know, this, this, the state looking at 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 things, you know, handing down some you know, big numbers to the region, the region working, you know, through our association of governments and so forth to arrive at you know, distribution of the units around the SCAG region. So there there are those considerations. You know, in terms of city to city, you know, specific planning efforts. You know, it offered to you, we certainly in in North County, you know, have a little, little bit of a unique a a approach in terms of a collaboration effort that we do with our neighboring cities, the North Orange County Planning Collaborative, where we get staffs together to speak on a monthly basis on on, you know, what's going on in town and and looking to identify where there may be. You know, some conflicts on such local issues. I can tell you, we actually, we did our our monthly meeting yesterday and compared notes on housing element updates. And I can tell you, you know, to Commissioner, some of Commissioner Depp's concerns. The timing concerns are real, certainly. And I can tell you, frankly, I was pretty pleased with what we're hearing, what we're, we were hearing from some of our neighbors. We are, while while Buena Park arguably got a little bit of a late start on on some of this effort due to, you know, various COVID issues and so forth. Every everyone else did as well. Whoops, I think we've got you on, I think she corrected it. And so we are, we are in in very much about the same place in the process as some of our neighbors. Some of them are a little more ahead. But we're catching up very rapidly and and certainly have some of those in mind.
Now just chiming in too, in terms of are we you you know, pressures from other city that we might face or pressures from our our city that other cities might face? And I don't know if this, whoa, something happened. I lost electricity here, but hopefully you can still hear me.
Yes, we can hear you and we can see you.
Okay, great. So I was just going to say all of the cities are on the same cycle, Commissioner Desai. So whereas it's an eight year cycle, this housing element update that needs to be done. And ours is due on October fifteenth, as Diane mentioned, and the cities around us are on the same cycle. So everyone sort of gearing up with this effort at the same time. So this pushover or push up pull between the two regions or, I guess jurisdictions is is not a concern, I guess, because we are all doing it at the same time.
And if I could, Mr. Mayor, add just a couple of comments onto that. Where a lot of cities are responsible for their own housing online updates and compliance. There are regional issues such as homelessness and other things that definitely benefit from collaboration and multi jurisdicitional efforts.
Do we have any further questions, comments or points to these discussion questions from any members of the planning commission?
Only follow up, follow up question is another way we can, we can promote our our goals is to look at any financial support. This is, this is a desire again. In order to, in order to achieve our goals, I wonder whether there are any financial incentives maybe at the state level or or local level in order to promote that possibility.
Mayor, Mayor Trout, I could address that a little bit, maybe Veronica could add to that. I think the, one of the benefits that we talked about earlier of having a a housing element that's certified and in compliance as determined by the Housing Community Development Department is that you're a candidate for grants such as Senate Bill two SB two grants. We grants that will help agencies in a myriad of ways, but there are other programs too that the city would be eligible for. And Veronica, did you have any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think the major advantage of having certainly as housing elements certified by the state is your eligibility for state funds. There is the SB two funds that you, a lot of the cities are using to update the housing element and also to do planning efforts to facilitate housing development. And SB two has a permanent stream of funding that also is contingent about having a housing element that is updated. That's complying with state law. The there are also competitive grants that if you don't have, it's not a requirement that you have a certified housing element to compete for those grants. But if you do not have one that comply with housing element, you you're not going to score well at all to be competitive. And that would be something like the sustainable communities and affordable housing grant. That that's the probably, aside from the low income housing tax credit, one of the most important affordable housing funding source in the state of California right now.
Thank you for it.
This Commissioner Lee, can I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner Lee.
Does the housing element include any requirement to address the, any issues that the schools may get from increasing residents and population? Or is that something different?
Mayor Trout, I can address that just based on discussions that we've had with in other communities with school districts. Of course, it depends on the school district, but in many districts, enrollment is waning. And that as opposed to previous decades where it was bursting at the seams, but enrollment is dropping. And that's the way that they receive a good share of their revenue is based on average daily attendance. So it really, it depends. And that would definitely be part of the environmental review process is reaching out to school districts. And oftentimes we can also have them as part of stakeholder interviews to see you know, where their particular district is positioned, whether more housing would actually benefit them or whether it'd be more of a a burden.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Commissioner Lee, that's, that's a good question because and it raises a good point of including the school districts in this discussion, because the particular question that we might want to get an answer to is the the current maximum capacity of each of the school campuses, the boundaries of those campuses, the attendance boundaries, and then what the current capacity is of those schools. Because we on our end, we know when you build certain housing, the average number of of young people that have children that 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 would bring in. So I think that's an important point to include, include in in that discussion. But I would agree that in in general, my understanding, at least for the elementary districts, is that enrollment is down in schools. That's why we've seen some of these schools, we saw recently a school combined, we saw years ago Walter Knott be used for something different. And so that that's, that's a good point, though, that I would, I would second that, I guess, echo that, that we should be including the schools in these discussions.
Mayor, developments would bring in younger families with younger children and is that what's prospective to be?
Exactly. Yep.
Eric, just would echo, that's a great comment and Swatty's probably about to say the same thing. We'll, we'll absolutely want to include the school district in one of our stakeholder discussions and we will do that.
Yeah.
All right. I see Commissioner Eads has raised their hand through the app. Would you like to speak? You're muted still.
There, better. I just want to add on the school thing, not just talk to the school districts, but I would recommend talking to the PTAs. We had, we raised five kids and went through some interesting cycles in the Dicinger School District and also the Anaheim Union High School District. And frankly, a lot of times, the parents were caught unaware of what was going to happen at the schools. So somehow, if that communication could be fostered, it would be help, helpful to the, to the parents who obviously have an interest in their kids. Yes, all mine are done, but I've lived through a lot of it.
That's a good point. Thank you, Commissioner Eads. We'll include one of, in our focus groups, we'll make sure to include some representation from PTAs.
Yeah, just please do. I mean, I, my, my oldest graduated in 2000 and my youngest graduated four years ago. So I have quite a span of servitude. Thank you.
All right.
I just have one more. Does this also include, like, I know we're going to address traffic, school, all of that, does it also include the roads as well, the roads themselves? Because a lot of people in the city have some issues and sidewalks is, does that include improving upon that as well?
Um, just to follow up on that, a detailed environmental, environmental analysis would really be part of that implementation phase. The adoption of the housing element, it's, it's more of a global document as Dave referenced, but that would be something that would be looked at in more detail during implementation. What, what is the, if some sites require rezoning, what are the particular impacts related to that action?
Got it, thank you.
I would, I would just add to that, Mr. Mayor, if I might. One of the, one of the effects that you often see in, in planning as cities update their housing element is it has a ripple effect. And, you know, Commissioner Lee, you're absolutely right. I mean, this may lead us to looking at our circulation element in the general plan and updating there. And when I say circulation, particularly, I mean, some of the, the things you mentioned, pedestrian circulation, I mean, we all think of the car, but alternative means and so forth. If we are going to experience an increase in population, which we most certainly are along with all of Southern California, all of these things need to be looked at. And what you find is the, the housing element update may just be the, the tip of the spear, so to speak, and, and we'll go from there. But great comment.
Thank you.
Any final comments from any members of the, the Commission before I move on to members of the City Council? And then we will seek the, the, we'll address the public comments that were submitted before the meeting as well. All right, seeing none at this time. Next, I'll move on to members of the Council. If any members of the Council wish to speak, if you could please just say your last name out loud, and then I'll call on you. Well, I see a hand raised through the app for Councilmember Brown. So Councilmember Brown, once you get unmuted. All right, I think you're unmuted now, if you want to try.
You don't communicate, so.
Huh? Gozameta. One of the areas I should also consider is Dale and Lincoln, the northeast corner. It was brought to our attention by one of the M B members, and it is within the city and it's underutilized there. Artesian Dale, the northeast corner. But one thing on the housing, limit on the housing heights or apartment heights, because we got the airport nearby. But the only way I see to do this is some of the areas are going to have to be changed to a different height on the zoning. That's all I have.
Next, I see through the, through the app, we have Councilmember Swift with her hand raised. Councilmember Swift.
For, excuse me, for the third question, other issues that have not been covered? I don't recall hearing about water and trash collection, some of those basic things. And we know that in certain parts of the city, we are having problems with water clarity. And so do we have planning going towards getting water, enough water to people and making sure that the water that we have is clear, clean water? And then I had just remembered what Art, Art had said just a minute ago about the area near the, near the train station where that could be changed to the zoning and a walking bridge possibly from the northeast corner of, of Dale and Artesia to be able to have a direct path to the train station. Anyway, that's some of the things I'm thinking about.
Any other members of Council wish to speak?
Sunny Park here, Mayor Proton.
Mayor Proton.
Yes, you know, I, my first question is the definition of affordability. Is there a room for adjustments for, depending on the city? I know it's a state or the hood guideline, but can we make it up and down or have a kind of a tiered approach to afford the definition of affordability per our city needs?
Diane, I can take this one. Unfortunately, no. The only thing that you can adjust is based on county level, not individual city. So that's established by state law in the Health and Safety Code, and it's only based on, and the income is adjusted annually and by household size and income limits as established by the state of California.
Okay, yeah, thank you. My next question is, I hear a lot about this term called inclusionary zoning in the affordable housing area. Can you explain to us or perhaps bring it back to us for our future meeting?
A quick and easy, well, a, a quick explanation of inclusionary zoning is that you adopt an ordinance that required developers of market rate housing to include a certain percentage of affordable housing on the property within the project, all pay a fee in lieu of providing it on site if they are not able to do it on site due to maybe difficulties with the site or some other reasons. But that is, has become a, an increasingly popular tool for affordable housing and certainly something that the city may want to explore in the future.
Okay, my last request is, and also comment is the Orchard View project and the Airport Inn project, those two projects were well, very well received by the community. So it would be very helpful for us to know how many church locations and the rundown hotel sites are available in the city so that we can encourage those sites can be used for affordable housing projects.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Proton. Yes, and, and those two groups are, will be a part of our focus group discussion as well, would be the church religious facilities as well as some, some hotels within the city.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sunny.
Um, yeah, this seems like it's a really fast thing that we've got to get done here. And, and I, one of my concerns is making sure that we have sufficient input from the community. As I was looking over the maps and the potential sites for housing, I think any of them could be a, a good opportunity to provide housing, but we, we really do have to have a robust discussion with the, with the, the residential areas surrounding those to ensure that the impact is, is going to work. I know we have to provide an environment where this housing can be built, but it's, these are big numbers, and it's important that Buena Park remain a city where people want to live, where they enjoy living, it's a happy place to live. And as we provide new housing or as developers provide new housing in the city, that people want to move into that because of the kind of community it is. And looking at our green spaces and looking at our traffic and, and the environmental quality of the area, we have some poor air quality issues and bringing a lot more cars into the city is going to be problematic in that regard. So it seems like there's a lot of very complex issues that have to be discussed through the whole thing. And I'm just, I'm concerned that we make enough space for the community to give their input and to have something to say about this.
Thank you, Councilmember Sunny. I'll just give a brief response to that with your permission, Mayor Trout. You know, in our next slide, we'll talk a little bit, Councilmembers Sunny, about the upcoming ways for the community to be involved in the process. We're definitely going to do a lot more outreach through our social media and all of this to get as many people as possible involved. I noticed we have thirty, I'm sorry, forty members of the community outside of the panel members here who are listening to us today, and I would request them to reach out to your friends, families and organizations, employees, and, you know, have them involved in the process as well. Outside of that, I know David has touched upon it a couple of times about the environmental, and so has Diane, about the environmental analysis that needs to be done. I do want to also mention that, you know, once the housing element is, is adopted, it identifies some implementation strategies. And one of them, if, if it happens to be rezoning of certain properties, excuse me, upzoning of existing residential properties, it would also have to accompany a zoning code text amendment to create development standards for what that development would look like. So right now in our zoning code, we have requirements for open spaces. It says, you know, forty percent of your lot needs to be open or twenty-five percent of the, I'm just making some numbers up for, for your understanding, but it says it needs to be available for active recreations, it needs to be usable space. You know, if it was just a five foot strip of land at the periphery of the property, then that's not considered usable open space. So do please keep in mind that when the, the code update happens, some of the open space requirements and some of the concerns that you're expressing will also be addressed through that vehicle.
Thank you.
And for me, one big, I guess, aspect when we're looking at these sites to, to create an environment or, or help foster an environment where people, people want to live and people want to come, is admitting what we have that's outdated and, and people that people don't use and amend accordingly. I was glad to see that the former Sears property in particular at the mall is highlighted between that site as well as the former Orchard site. I would imagine there's significant overlap in, in utilities piping everything that really impacts services at those sites, like, like water, like trash. And so I want to make sure that that's a part of any discussion pretty thoroughly when we discuss these amendments. Because of course, we're going to talk about things like traffic, but I feel like these, these other very important and very expensive decisions, when it comes to these infrastructure improvements, really need to be at the forefront when we're discussing these, these sites. And then also to maybe as a discussion that might want to end up going hand in hand would be what policies we want to consider at future meetings, at least of the Council, to, to have construction that we are interested in, in our city representing, like full electric requirements, like green, green building requirements, those types of things. This probably makes sense to have these discussions at, at a similar time as we're going through, as, as we're going through this element, element update. And then the, another thing I wanted to touch on was ADUs, since we have received comments on those, and we did just hear, we have very few, it sounds like, in, in our city. So potentially, at least because at minimum, we have one new council member since we've made these decisions, revisiting that as a potential tool to, to meeting these RENA numbers and keeping, keeping communities without having to approve projects that differ community so substantially, but also create potential benefits for current residents as well with these ADUs. And I think the, one of the, let's see, just looking through my notes real quick. I think those are probably some of the main points I'd want to touch on, as well as something that was mentioned earlier about, we'll be discussing at a future meeting, Beach Boulevard, an important discussion in the future about providing clarity on the corridor, since the current plans for the corridor were decided by prior councils. And now we have three new council members, at least three since, since those prior determinations have been made. So I think this is going to be the significant aspect of this discussion is giving that clarity, not only to staff, but also potential developers where we, where we stand on this. And it will be very important in creating this housing element, once we have clarity on the corridor. So with that, do we have any other members of the Council or the Commission who would wish to say final comments before we move on to the final portion of the meeting? All right, seeing none at this time, I'm going to, so who would I turn this back over to, I believe Swati, would this be you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll just quickly wrap up this part. This is the next steps of what's coming, mostly as part of the housing element update process. As we mentioned, a community meeting, an online survey. Let's see, let me, and of course, the preparation, the analysis, the sites inventory analysis as well as the draft document itself. Please do keep in mind that the draft document goes through the hearing with Planning Commission as well as the City Council, and there are those opportunities for public to express their comments and views as well. That said, I'm going to just quickly check in with Diane. Diane, did you have anything else to add before we kind of wrapped up this session?
No, I'm very grateful for all the comments tonight, thank you.
Great, thank you. So on the next slide, we have our webpage as well as our email that the City of Buena Park created for housing element update process. So if you could please bookmark this, any updates we have through the process, we'll make sure to keep our website updated and of course, for members of the community to be in touch with the staff, that's the email to use. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So next on our agenda is going to be communications. Madam City Clerk, did we receive any public comments for tonight's meeting prior to the public comment deadline for this particular meeting?
Yes, Mayor, we did receive a few public comments from members of the public. I'm going to read their names and briefly summarize their comments. We received a comment from Janet.
Before you, before you summarize it, just so those that, those know who submitted comments, all comments were received as they were coming in, they were being forwarded to all members of the Commission and the Council. So we have been able to read these all the way through your comments. So we thank you for your participation, and there will be much, much, much more opportunity for participation, not just through sending in comments, but also dialogue during meetings, since this one really doesn't give you that much of an ability to do that during the meeting. We will have these opportunities at future meetings. All right, back to you, Madam City Clerk.
Great, well said, Mayor. Comments received were from Janet Avalas, Anna Lilia Castro, Norma Adori, Lizbeth Flores, Ramona Lopez, and Aurora Zacharias, and America On Track, who all requested assistance with low income housing that is smoke free and free from secondhand smoke. And then we also received a comment from Mr. Victor Perrin regarding the northeast corner of Dale and Artesia. And that is this, the end of the public comments.
Perfect. So the next portion of the agenda is going to be for closing comments from any members of the Council, the Commission, or staff. So starting with, we'll go in reverse order now, any members of the Council wish to speak before we close this out? Seeing none, any members of the Commission wish to speak? Seeing none, and finally, any members of staff wish to speak before we adjourn this meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank the Council and Commission, and I, I've participated in a number of these efforts and over the course of my career, and I can tell you, this, this has just been great input. and over the course of my career, and I can tell you, um, this, this has just been great input by all the commissioners and council. Really useful information this early in the process and greatly appreciate it. Um, thanks to the RRM team and we'll, uh, we'll, we'll keep it keeping on from our end. Thank you.
I just wanted to quickly recognize all of you as well. I know Tuesday nights and Wednesday nights are the typical nights that, uh, both of your bodies meet. So really thank you for making time on a Thursday evening to discuss this topic. Definitely sharing your thoughts and comments on this and, and your excitement, you, you know, we know that you're excited to be a part of this. So thank you.
All right. So seeing no further comments, I'm going to officially adjourn this meeting. Um, and I'll just say again, for those, I, I see people, uh, clicking the raise hand button who are members of the public. Uh, there will be other opportunities where we will be able to have more of a dialogue through this process. And I encourage you to continue submitting your comments, uh, to the city council and the city clerk's office, um, on this, this important, uh, this important element update, housing element update. And we will all again, continue to read those, uh, those comments and stay engaged. Uh, so with that, I will adjourn the meeting and we'll see you all soon.